We're not investing in the COVID producing. In what? The COVID. The COVID, the vaccine haircutters thing.
See if he's not only a customer but president.
Mayor, go through easy. Give me number two. Take it off.
Is that on the back too?
All the way around.
Can you, Brayden and Les, can you hear us?
Yeah. Yes, I can.
We call this January 4th, 2021 meeting, regular meeting of city council to order at 7:00 PM. I have regrets for Council Valentino. On Zoom, we have Council McMurdo and Council Ellsworth. Welcome, everybody. I'd like to acknowledge that we are on 35 land and we are all pretty people. Thank you. I would like to have an approval of the agenda. Council Colburn, Deputy Mayor Wong, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So, community comments and feedback?
On your agenda tonight, I believe it's Resolution 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4. It states that the prices is an attachment. I cannot find any attachment. Is that why is it not there?
I will go to
Evaluation sheet is locked today to the public, so you can make arrangements to come and see us at City Hall and we can show you.
Okay. And next, I went on the Thompson.ca site and looked in our bylaw, looking for the organizational procedural bylaw that was passed this past fall, and I can't find it there. Is that being withheld from the public?
Then I will go to Administration.
It's not being withheld from the public. I can send you a copy and make sure that it's updated tomorrow with those documents on the website.
And finally, the old organizational procedural. The procedure was if someone asked a question, the following meeting will be answered. And since I asked a question last meeting, can I expect to have my answer in tonight's meeting?
I think our procedure has been to get the question. I'm not just sure over Christmas break. I didn't see. I will go to and Anthony's. I should also got regrets from Anthony McGinnis tonight. He is also out ill. Jenny, do you have anything on that? Okay, can I apologize for that? Make sure you get the answers either in the next day or two or at next council, whichever you prefer.
I'll get to next meeting, board.
And that'll be okay. Thank you. Do we have any more community comments, feedback? Thirty final times. Any more community comments or feedback? Thank you. And we will keep in the notes that we have Mr. Matas' question from last council. Next, we're going to go to 5.1, adoption of the minutes. Resolution 2021001 moved by Deputy Mayor Wong, seconded by Council Colburn. Their resolve that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in Council, Denver City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, December 14th, 2020, be adopted and circulated. Administration and and Council. Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
6.1, a resolution authorizing the renaming of the Jack Crowley Cross Country Ski Trail. Resolution 2021002 moved by Council Landmark, seconded by Council Colburn. Whereas prior to 2009, the city of Thompson had one cross-country ski trail known as the Crowley Trail, located just north of the city of Thompson. And whereas in 2009, local citizens John Holland, Christie Prustay, Ed Holland, and Carrie Holland worked with the city to add more trails and to widen and revitalize Crowley Trail. The system now includes eight trails ranging from easy to more, most difficult, and is approximately 10 kilometers long. And whereas while the trail signs now reflect the change, it does not appear to have been formally approved through council. Now therefore, their resolve that council formally approved the name Thompson Community Ski Trails in order to recognize efforts and coordination of our local volunteers. Administration? Okay, I would just like to mention to this, while the whole trail system is being changed, the first original loop is still being called the Jack Crowley Loop in the system. Council, I'm Mark. Do you have any comments?
No, thank you very much. I just, oh, I guess, yes, just want to say thank you to the Hollens and to John Crowley for originally starting it and continuing it. And I know that we made the, make sure it stays that way with the Hollens made a presentation to us about keeping that as a recreational area. Thank you.
Any other councils? Deputy Mayor?
Just, just want to say those kind of things. A lot of people do a lot of time and people put into this kind of activity and do not get recognized. So this is well deserved, I think. Thank you for them to step up and do this. And it's a lot of hard work, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Any comments from our Zoom partners?
Nothing further to add for me.
I'm good.
Yes, and this, I would like to say, especially, I don't know whether it's because of the pandemic or what, but the cross and the amount of snow we've had this year, the cross-country ski trails are busier than I've ever seen in the amount of traffic in that region. It's good to see it's one more activity for people to, to be able to get out and not be close together and enjoy the pressure. So call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 6.2 is a resolution to approve the tabulation of for plumbing services for city-owned buildings. Resolution 2021003 moved by Deputy Mayor Wong, seconded by Council Colburn. Their resolve that council approved the recommendations of the purchasing agent and award plumbing services for the city of Thompson to MR Plumbing for the tender price of $69,555 for three years as per tender file number 2012985. Administration?
Okay, so the tender went out for pre-year term, like previous term ended on December 31st. Free bids were received for this tender. The recommendation is to order to the highest evaluated proposal being offered. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Number one is like we allow them to mark up the material. So for us to know whether they mark up according to what their tender, how do we know the bill? Do we see the bill originally or we just based on trust? When they send us the bill for saying, I bought $100 worth of the material. Now I'm going to charge you 20%. So signed at $20. With administration, I'd like to know, how can we know whether that legit or not? Do we have any process for dealing with this type of a cross tender and invoicing?
So we have the right to request at any point to see the originals.
We ever request?
This is, this is a new thing for this contract. If we hadn't had any in the past one. So previously, they could only, I believe it was up to $200 and this time it's up to $2,000 based on feedback from the different departments. So that's, this is a new process for this contract.
So, Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask more. So Jenny, from my understanding, you said this procurement policy is new?
This, this term in the contract is new.
Okay, I get it. The term is new. But the procurement policy is old. So my question was, did we ever ask for the invoice just to verify? We trust them, but we need to verify. Because when I look at the next two other tablets, price, some material talking about $60,000, $80,000. When it marked up 25%, that's very significant. So for us to do our due diligence and also the administration, I'd like to know, did we ever look into that to see whether they are sending the bill according to what the, the tendering?
In the past, in the past contract, we think over $200 had to get quotes. So we had, we had to quote prior to getting that work done and we had to have more quotes. So it wouldn't just go right directly to the contractor and go to a quote system and then we'd get awarded the lowest bid on that, on those materials. So with this process to, to review some of the red tape for those contractors to get the work done when they come on site, it was had to increase to $2,000 so that if they come in and they get a $500 part, they can quickly do that repairs and having to wait, going back, getting through quotes and coming back after the fact to get that work done. So it was really identified by the departments to, to improve efficiencies and get those repairs done in more timely manner.
So, sorry, Madam Mayor, so somehow I misunderstood you, what you're trying to say. My question is about the material, not about the price. So the material, like we allow them to charge the 25% or 20%, whatever the, the tendering. So when they send us the bill, they say we fixed this problem. So now the, the labor is $200, but the material is $300. So the $300, I believe, is already marked up 20%. So for us to know that really the markup to 20% or they're not 20%, it could be 40% or 50% without looking at the invoice they got from the, their supplier. So my question is, did we ever look into that? You say we, we have right to ask. So my question to you, did we ever ask to look at those invoices?
This, this markup system is new, is new for this current contract. It wasn't applicable to the contract. So the previous contract, they had to get quotes. If it was over $200, we had to get quotes from more than one vendor to do that work. So this is the first time. So we haven't had this, this hasn't been in the last contract. We haven't done it yet.
So this will be the first billings that they will be giving us and then you see what happens is they do submit plus 25% and fill in the
I just want to make a final comment. But anyway, I'd like to see this because it's one of our taxpayer, who, I'm not blaming them, own the business, they own the property. There's a taxpayer. I'm more than happy to see the local people got the contract. That's my final comment. Thank you.
Council Landmark?
I understand Council Wong's question. And just in order to clear this up, I think that our Public Works Committee could probably direct our administration to ensure that we get the receipt for the the purchase invoice from, like if it's MR Plumbing or KNC Electric, whoever they get their parts from, right? So that they, we make sure that we get the receipt so that they see that we get our markup to 20%, right? As long as we meet that direction. So I think we should forward this to our, our committee to make sure that that's happening.
Council Colburn?
Yeah, Council Colburn. I got a couple of questions here. Okay, have the city settled on the markup percentage?
Administration?
So the markup presented was something that was part of the tender. So they had to provide us with what their markup was going to be on the
So what is that going to be?
I will too.
I just, yeah, wherever there is no markup quoted on the materials to be supplied by the proponent while carrying out services. So it sounds like a zero markup.
Okay, the second part of the question on that, we're offering, they're offering us 20, oh, 20, 30? Why don't you give them one? $34,000 a year. That's what we spent. And now we're, they're doing it for $53,185 a year. What about if they go over that number? What happens?
I'll let you answer that.
The contract is just for the, the price per hour that they're recording. So it's really up to the city and the department to show that they're within their budget. So they go, when we're getting the money prior not available to do the work.
So basically, once they go over their budget, then it would have to come back for approval for higher amount stuffs.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
Mayor Smoot?
Oh, Council Prum and then you, Council Ellsworth?
I'm not sure if it's an option or not, but it might reduce some paperwork if if we have, if we have an account, just say at one of the local plumbing shops, if it gets charged directly to us, then we know there's no markup and they don't have to worry about supplying receipts and going back and forth. So that's maybe one idea to bring.
Council Ellsworth?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Smoot. We have nine billings plus any outside billings that the plumber would be looking after. I'm very concerned that in 2021, we're still contracting out the plumbing work. There's going to be other work in the next two resolutions. And I think about the fact that we've got an asset management program started. The only thing that this plumber is doing is what requesting. There's no pro, pro acting. If there were some things that we could get a plumber to do in the city that shouldn't be fixed. We have aging billings that's going to be breaking down in the future. We have bigger billings like the wastewater treatment plant. And I have read all the notes with this. This is only estimate, cause been discussed, could be more. It's based on previous years, which is difficult to do when you've got a brand-new wastewater treatment plant that I would say is triple the the size of our old one. I really believe the city, and I know there's a plaza actually, where there's a 30-day either party can get, get out of. And thanks for the information I received from administration when I inquired on the weekend. But here's my point. At some point in time, with all the billings we got, the newer billings that we're getting, we have to look at having our own in-house people doing this work. And I'm not saying beyond any costs. But at the same time, we have no control, really. You can say come back, Mayor Smoot, to get anything that's not in the budget approved. If we're halfway through the year and we've got that money used up, now we're coming back again. It could be a lot more than we would have incurred if we had our own in-house. So certainly I will support it because of the 30-day in and out plazas, but we need as a city to be doing more analysis and looking at in the future, getting our own tradespeople working for the city. And I want to add with the water treatment plan we inherited from Valade, which, which is an old belly. We're certainly going to see more work there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think in answer to this, we did ask the administration a couple of years ago to look into this, and at that time, the cost was going to be quite a bit more. Now, I believe through our asset management that we're working on now, that will tell us and that will be part of this whole next bigger picture as we're moving forward. Anybody else?
Uh.
Council Fountainford?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe that the amount that's cited here is very reasonable for an annual plumbing cost. I realize it may go more. And I'm glad to support it. And just to, to add, by contracting out to local business, I think we're also doing our city a favor as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Council McMurdo?
Thanks, Mayor Smoot. I just wanted to say, I think Council Ellsworth brings up some good points with respect to looking into and exploring the opportunity to, to do this work in-house. Um, but yeah, with the 30-day opt-out, I like that the city has built that into the, into the contracts. My question is, do the contractors break down their invoice in terms of the hours worked per building? And if so, have there been any hours worked in the Norplex since it's been boarded up?
I don't have an answer here tonight, but I can find that for you.
We can find out for sure. I know at the beginning, when the Norplex was first closed, there was some work done in there, but I'm, I'm not privy if there has been lately, but I know electricians and plumbers both send invoices for individual jobs that are approved and looked at by administration.
Okay, so we can track where the time is being spent in what buildings and kind of address that, maybe use that as part of our asset management program to review. Thank you.
Any other councils? With that being said, I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
6.3 is a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for electrical service for the city-owned buildings. Resolution 2020, 202, 2021004, probably get used to that. Moved by Council Landmark, seconded by Council Colburn. Their resolve that council approved the recommendations of the purchasing agent and award electrical services to KNC Electric for their tender price of $222,471 for three years as per tender file number 2012987. Administration?
Council, what's the last resolution? The, the current contract expires December 31st. And the tender was issued in December and we had true responses to that bid and the recommendation is to go to the lowest evaluated.
Thank you. Council Landmark? You signed the resolution. You have any comments?
Nope, it's, we're starting contract for electrical. Either work or
Okay, thank you. Council Colburn?
The 70, thank you, Madam Mayor. The $74,800 a year. My question now is the opposite on this. Do we only pay the invoices? Can we come on your budget on this or do we pay them that amount?
How we speak for the actual words being
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Any other councils?
Mayor Smoot?
Go ahead, Council Ellsworth.
Yeah, Mayor Smoot, if you, if you look at the $222,000 over a three-year contract, again, it's an estimate based on previous years. We've got to be getting close to what it would cost to have a tradesperson in there. It's around over $70,000 a year. So my comments, I won't make them, but they are the same comments and concerns as they were in the previous resolution. But something that we again, need to look at in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I see here that KNC was the awarded winning company. That organization, from my understanding, is owned now by its task unit, Cre Nation, or maybe York Blending. I can't remember.
York Blending.
Thank you very much. And, and we have an Aboriginal accord, Madam Mayor. I'm wondering if there was some consideration for this company, given the fact, I understand that they've been awarded it anyways, but I'm curious to know if we provided some incentive because it is an Aboriginal-owned company from one of the communities in our surrounding area in a bidding process.
No, in the municipal process, it has to, there is things that you can take into consideration, but basically you can't take content as such into the, into the prices.
Oh. I don't believe that that's absolutely true, Madam Mayor. But it's, no, no, no deal at this point. Maybe we
Jenny, did you have any?
I'm just having a really good we can
Deputy Mayor? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I don't really have a problem with this contracted out. The only thing I have is the, the markup is kind of jump from one year to the second year is more than the 5%. Perhaps some is like 10 or 15%. So that's the only thing I have concern about it. But again, this is a private business. If we accept it, we accept it. That's, that's all I want to say. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any further comments from councils? Okay, seeing none. Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
6.4 is a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the HVAC services for the city-owned buildings. Resolution 2021005 moved by Council Prum and seconded by Council Landmark. Their resolve that council approved the recommendation of the purchasing agent and award the HVAC services to Ice Age Mechanical Limited for their tender price of $148,363 and 50 cents for three years as per tender file number 20-12988. Administration?
So is the other contract, the current contract expires December 31st. This one only had one response to the tender, so that's the recommendation is go with that one response. That one's
Thank you. Council Prum, did you have any comments?
I do have a few questions. I believe this company is based out of Alberta and what if I'm not mistaken? Do we, do they have a satellite shop here or?
I do believe they have a presence in North Dakota. Norway, I believe. So they, they didn't, if they can respond in 24 hours to your question you had.
Any further questions? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a side note about this, because when you look at the, the material is the highest one compared to the last two one. It's about $88,000 a year based on, based on the, the previous expenditure. So this is the, the one I definitely need to monitor closely. You know, this is very significant. So based on just earlier Council Landmark suggested, I think that would be the one that we really, really pay attention to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils, comments? Seeing none. Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is it for the business for the evening. As for the marriage report, I don't have an official marriage report. We had very few meetings over the holidays. There was some meetings with NRHA, just keeping us updated on the practices and procedures in Thompson and area with the COVID update. And we, today, we had a another call with them and they're in the process of setting up a vaccine area site in Thompson. And that they're hoping to have by February the 1st. We'll have more information toward the end of next week or even the end of this week on that. And just again, the vaccine isn't a bill to end all, so let's take it easy. Our outline communities of Oxford House, York Factory, York Landing, and Schmattawa, their cases have dramatically decreased. So that's a good sign, but So that's a good sign, but we definitely have to keep up our diligence in that. Wear masks, wash our hands, stay safe, stay distant, stay home when you can, and that's about it. I wish everybody a happy new year. Twenty twenty-one is going to be different, but it's definitely not going to happen overnight, so we still have to take COVID very seriously, and we're waiting for the new health orders that'll come out on January the eighth. I don't expect too much will change, but there could be a bit of change around some of the things that are allowing us to do, but don't hold your breath on us getting all this COVID ready anytime soon. I'll go to council and see if they have anything that they've done for the city in the last week or two. Okay, seeing none, I'd like to thank our city administration over Christmas and staff for all the hard work that went into the snow removal and the people that were still working here at City Hall. And that's other staff that has been moved to other jobs has stepped up to the plate, and I appreciate it very much. So with that being said, I'll call for adjournment. Councillor Colburn, councillor Prue, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.